Seven o'clock, we call the meeting to order. Abby, are you in the roll?
Excuse me, yes, I am chair. And we got ourselves a little better organized. I have all of you listed in alphabetical order, so I don't want to screw you up tonight, but Commissioner Brink?
Here.
Commissioner Kubal?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Steeler?
Here.
Commissioner Young. Chair Gerard.
Here. We ask if you're able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with changes.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, it's a non-nabatable motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimous. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented or with changes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, does Justin make the motion?
Yes.
Justin is the motion, and Geneva is the seconder.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Epstein.
Oh, one abstention. Commissioner Miller. We'll move to item six, our first item on our regular agenda. It's a public hearing for resolution number 05-24-23-01 for a conditional use permit and planned unit development for Forest Hills United Methodist Church, 1790 Eleventh Street Southeast. This is a public hearing, and the way this will work this evening is that the city will present the application as they understand it. When they're finished, the commissioners will ask any clarification questions that they have. We will then ask the applicant, guessing you're the applicant, sir, if you have anything you would like to add, feel free. We'd ask you to come up to the podium and spend a couple minutes if you need to explain anything. After we have any questions for you, we will then have the public hearing. I will give further instructions how that works at that time. At the conclusion of the public hearing, it'll come back to the commission for a final decision. So with that, I believe Ken, you are presenting.
I am, Mr. Chair, thank you. Screw that on so I don't spill it. So as you introduced, this is a public hearing for Forest Hills United Methodist Church at 1790 Eleventh Street Southeast. In the location map I put up on the screen, it's on the north side of Highway 70 or Scandia Trail. Public hearing is for a conditional use permit and a planned unit development for the church. This is an aerial photo of the current church on their property. They have made these requests, in part, so they can add an accessory building to their campus, which I'll show you that in a minute. And part of our research, we found, we couldn't find any record of a conditional use ever being approved for the church, so they've made that request to bring it into conformance with our current zoning standards. The accessory building, go to this next map, one more, here we go. It'll be a garage and a pavilion located just north of their existing parking lot. It would be a garage, it would be 40 by 48 for storage, and attached to it would be a 30 by 60 canopy, which would be used for outdoor worship and picnic-type activities on the campus. Church is on about a almost six-acre property in our single-family residential, in a single-family residential zoning district. The city code requires conditional use permits for places of worship in our single-family district, and as I indicated earlier, we could not find a record that this church ever had been approved for a CUP either by the township or city. So as, again, part of the request, the made application to receive, hopefully approved, be approved for a conditional use permit to bring it in to conformance with our current C standards for places of worship. The city code has four primary standards, four places of worship in the single-family district, or excuse me, for any place in the city of Forest Lake, and I included those on page two of your report. And in a very brief summary, they, with the existing church, meet all those standards. There's really no issue that the city is aware of with the church being there and their operations, and so they meet all those standards, and we'll talk about it, but we'll be recommending approval of the CUP. The planned unit development is for then to have the church building on their campus and the picnic building, garage shelter, garage and picnic shelter building, excuse me, as shown here on the screen in this elevation. Unfortunately, our city code for accessory buildings and places of worship, as I tried to explain it in the report, don't clearly have a nice neat box to fit this kind of structure in. But the code does say the planned unit development is required for places of worship when they have more than one building and accessory storage building on the property. And the PUD also gives the city and the church some flexibility in what I would call our more typical zoning standards. And those are all written for accessory buildings, I think primarily for if you want to put a garage or a pole burn on your single-family property, not a church facility like this. So the PUD would allow them to have this structure, which would have a roof area of about 3,700 square feet, and to allow it to be built with pole-type construction or pole style rather than a typical stick frame. I'll go into each of those in a little more detail here. The city code says for a five-acre or five to 10-acre lot, the maximum size accessory building is allowed is 3,000 square feet. This one, total roof area, again, is about 3,720 square feet. The garage itself is 1,920 square feet. The code isn't even real clear to know if we should be counting the roof area as part of accessory building. It's a roof. It gets, it will get used, assuming it's approved. Does it, again, fit that neat box? Not really, but to be safe, we're, again, we would, we'll be recommending approval of this size structure and this design as part of the PUD with the flexibility that that grants the city. The second question that comes into play is the type of construction. The city code allows pole-style or pole-type accessory structures in our conservancy, ag districts, and rural residential districts. This, again, is a single-family zoning district, would typically not allow this. Now, if you look at the garage portion itself, let me find that image. It's on the next one, I believe. Especially this image here, this end wall, that looks like a garage to me with horizontal siding, and it's brown to match the church building as well as possible. And even this image shows the garage doors. You can't tell from the outside that it's pole-frame or pole-type construction versus stick-built. That style of construction, I think, in those regulations were probably put in to ensure that an older-style pole building with vertical metal siding would not be placed on a 10,000 square foot lot in the city, in their single-family districts. So the primary reason for that regulation, staff's opinion is for the look, the architectural style. Again, if you put this on any other single-family lot, no one will know the difference whether it's pole-frame or stick construction. Now, the picnic pavilion, sure, you can tell with, there's poles, and there'll be trusses that hold it together, but that's not unlike any other picnic pavilion you might see in a park, or on a school grounds, or that kind of thing. And so with all that said, staff's opinion is that in this location, with the horizontal siding, the proposed building really meets the intent of the code, if not meeting the code itself. We held, or tried to hold, a neighborhood meeting two weeks ago tonight, and invited the neighbors to come out and speak and get information, and we did not have anybody attend. It was just myself and the two church representatives, so we had a nice little talk. Since then, and since we did the public hearing notice, I've not received any comments, questions, phone calls, emails, anything from any of the neighbors on this request. So tonight, we have two recommendations for you, they'll start on page four of your report. First one is, we're recommending that the commission adopt the resolution that approves the conditional use permit for the property at 1790 Eleventh Street Southeast for the place of worship with the existing church facility, and we're recommending that subject to the five conditions that are listed in the report, and those are in the resolution. An important one that's there is item D, that any future major changes to the exterior site conditions, buildings, or the parking lot would require city approval of a conditional use permit amendment. So that, it's on the record, this, you're getting approved for what you have now, major changes down the road will trigger a need for an amendment and go through a minimum process. The second recommendation, then, is on the top of page five, which is page 12 in your packet, to recommend to the city council approval of the planned unit development for the Forest Hills United Methodist Church. And this PUD would be to allow the church to add the garage pavilion structure to their property as described in the report, and as I described to you. With that, I'll stop to take questions. There are church representatives here to answer questions as well.
Questions to staff?
I have one. So if this moves forward, and they go forward with this pavilion, just as a structural engineer, I see this, and I see some concerns, but they would have to go through the normal process of having an engineer and an architect sign off on it, not just an architect. I know with residential, you can get away with just an architect signing off, so...
Yes, they would.
They would submit both structural and architectural.
Yeah, our city building department would certainly require engineer plans that would be stamped by an engineer before they release the building permit.
Sir, if you could just wait a minute? Sure. Thank you.
He's anxious to help.
I know. Appreciate that, but I gotta run it a certain way.
Runs a tight ship.
Other questions? I have one. Ken, on page 16 of the packet, they have the site plan, and it looks like there's a small accessory structure off of the parking lot?
Yes.
Is that conforming, and will that remain?
This one here, Chair?
Yes.
It's their plan to keep it for now, at least until, my understanding, until the garage gets completed, and then they're discussing whether to remove it or not. But that can be all, keeping it could be part of the site plan approval as part of the PUD.
Would you need us to make a note for that, then?
Absolutely.
If that was the case. All right. Commissioners, anything else? Hearing none, with the applicant, like to say a few words? We ask that you, do we have a sign-in sheet, too?
We do, Chair, yes.
We ask you state your name and address for the record, and also sign in, please. It'll be like that old TV show, I can't remember what.
What's my line? Say what it is?
It is not.
I don't remember that show.
Sign in, please.
Yeah, my name is Dwayne Ditperner. I live at 6350 196th Street North, Forest Lake, and I'm the trustee of Forest Hills United Methodist Church. And the first reason I want to step to the podium was about the question about engineering plans. We've already had those drawn up at considerable cost to us by someone that was hired by our builder, so those are already ready to go. The other thing, I just wanted to point out, the reason Forest Hills United Methodist Church is doing this is our campaign model is to expand our tent. It's not just for the, for the members of Forest Hills United Methodist Church to use, but it will be open for the community to come in and sign up and follow some guidelines that we're going to set forth for its use, but anybody can use it for graduation, a family reunion, baptisms, graduate, all these things are not just for our church, but for our community. So if you have any further questions?
Questions to the applicant?
I just have one.
Yeah.
First of all, I love the project, but my question, it's more a comment. Usually when construction happens, then the residents get upset about the noise and the dust that might fly on any given day. So have you thought about that so that you don't upset the neighbors when their windows might be open when you start your building?
Oh, during the construction period?
Yes.
I've been told by our builder that the pavilion part of it will take exactly one day to put up, maybe a day and a half. After we have it graded and ready for them to come in, drop the materials, they'll put that part of it up in a day. And the garage part, of course, will take a little bit longer, but less than a week, so it's going to be a minimal amount of disruption time.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, we may have some at the end. This is a public hearing, we ask anyone who wishes to speak to this issue to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and write your name and address. And then spend a couple minutes giving us your thoughts on the application. Once we have heard all parties who are interested in commenting, we will close the public hearing, and we will bring it back for further discussion and decision by the planning commission. So with that, we'll open the public hearing at 7:17 PM. Does anyone wish to address this application? Do we have anyone online?
We just have city administrator Patrick Casey, I don't think that he is here, though, to comment on the application, so no.
All right. And as I believe, Ken, you stated there was, you've received no emails to be read in?
Nothing, yeah, correct.
I'll ask one more time, does anyone wish to speak to this application? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing at 7:18 PM, bring it back for discussion and decision by the planning commission. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to adopt resolution 05-24-23-01, approving the CUP, and then with the following five staff conditions.
I have a motion to approve, adopt a resolution, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimous. The Chair is looking for a motion to recommend to the city council, they are the final approval of the PUD for the Forest Hill United Methodist Church.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it, your chairman.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion?
Do we want to add in the clause that that, the structure building, the little outbuilding needs to be removed after construction?
What's the plan for the outbuilding?
The small building.
Looks like a shed on the area, y'all.
This one here. Dwayne, you want to step up, please?
You know, there's a lot of people watching at home, you know?
Your 15 minutes of fame.
Right now, there is no specific plan for it, but with the double garage that will more than double the building that's out there, it likely will be removed. However, I have to, I have to say to all of you that that garage part may not be even built this summer yet, because we're still, we have the money to pay for the pavilion, we do not have all the money we need yet for the garage. So if we don't, that garage project will take place next summer, so between now and next summer, when that's like, most likely to happen, we would need to keep that garage to at least that long.
You would be okay with removing that garage at the conclusion of the new garage being built?
I believe we would be, because we would be more than doubling our space.
You know, we got a lot of stuff in Minnesota. Thank you.
Okay. If I could make that friendly amendment to the motion, is that...
Kevin, add your motion, and we would like to add...
Yes, so I would welcome that amendment, and that, that they could leave the storage building there until the project is complete and garage is built.
Does that...
Work for you, Ken?
Paul's thinking.
That should have happened on the prior motion, correct?
The prior motion was for the... For the conditional use permit, the PUD is the one that's allowing the multiple buildings, so I think allowing it on this one is...
And then I'll, if that's the wish of the commission, I'll work that into the resolution and the discussion for the city council, that that be removed, as you discussed.
So we have a friendly amendment to add, item A, which is to remove the current garage at the conclusion of the garage, the new garage construction. And I don't remember who seconded that.
I did, sir.
Commissioner Larson.
You okay with the second?
I am, sir. I think it falls under the condition number four, possibly, major changes to the existing exterior buildings, et cetera.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair, we're trying not to bring this back for CUP amendment and roll all the building, all the current buildings, projects that we know right now under the PUD process, so that's why I'm suggesting we'll make, we'll discuss it in the report and put it in the resolution for the PUD approval.
Okay. You good with that, sir?
Yes, sir, I am, Chairman.
Okay. All right, with that being said, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries unanimous. So what we did this evening, we approved a resolution for your CUP, so you can move forward. However, we are not the final on the PUD, that'll go to the city council and probably in...
June 12th.
I'm sorry?
June 12th.
June 12th. And then you should be final, so good luck with your project, hope it all goes well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Item 6B, it's a continued wetland banking ordinance, I believe, Abby, this is yours?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. On April 26, this body held a public hearing regarding a city-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment that would affect wetland banking within the city. At that time, the city, or the planning commission, did hold a public hearing, and in that hearing, you did hear from Rice Creek Watershed District President Steve Schmaltz, who requested this commission table the action and give the city a little bit more time to work with its, its community agencies and state partners to explore alternatives to the proposed ordinance. Since that time, staff has worked with both watershed districts, so that's Comfort Lake, Forest Lake Watershed District, and Rice Creek Watershed District, Bowser, the Board of Water and Soil Resources, a state agency, and our County Conservation District, met with each of these bodies independently and as groups to talk about the ordinances as proposed. From that, you, we've amended the ordinance that is before you. There's two ordinances that were submitted into your packet. The planning commission is being asked tonight to propose, or make a recommendation to the city council for one of the ordinances. So one ordinance indicates that wetland banking would be permissible within the city, but in certain circumstances and with some certain limitations, so it would only be allowed in the conservation district, and it would not result in any wetland, new wetland acres or new wetland creation. The idea being, if somebody wanted to bank, they would have to be doing it with existing wetlands, enhancing, restoring, or preserving their properties, only in that conservation district. It would allow for a landowner in any other zoning district, if they had wetlands, to petition the city to rezone those wetland areas to be the conservancy district. That would allow the city some, the opportunity to review those. The other ordinance that is before you is an outright prohibition on wetland banking. I understand that that's a little unorthodox, and the commission probably isn't used to seeing two ordinances in front of you. The reason for this is staff has pretty consistently recommended that the city not allow for wetland banking. It's not that we're not in support of restoring or conserving our wetlands, we are concerned for the monetary, the monetary program of wetland banking and how that could have an impact in our community. So I do want to note, nothing in either ordinance would prohibit a property owner from creating, enhancing, preserving, or restoring wetlands on their property. The problem would be, they wouldn't be able to do these things in certain areas and bank them. The other thing is, nothing in the ordinance would prohibit a developer from mitigating wetland impacts in the community. So if you are a developer and you are proposing to impact a wetland, we would still allow you to purchase credits elsewhere, create wetland elsewhere within the community, to do what you needed to do to still be able to develop within the community. I do want to know, so any zoning ordinance text amendment, we look to see that what is being proposed is consistent with the comprehensive plan, that there's no conflicts with the zoning code, and what is being proposed is, there's a public good for it. So that being said, I do want to note in the staff report, I note that neither of the ordinances are in conflict with the comprehensive plan. There was a double negative in that sentence, I just want you to know, neither of the ordinances are in conflict, so we're not conflicting with the comprehensive plan. There's no conflict with the zoning code, in fact, this would be making the zoning code a lot more clear of where we would or would not allow for wetland banking. And then lastly, it's in the public's good to at least explore ordinances, develop them, where we're balancing out all of the special interests of the community. So again, the council or the commission has one option, you're going to move to recommend one of these ordinances, they have just different titles. If you would like to prohibit wetland banks, that would be the first one, where you would recommend the council approve the ordinance enacting chapter 153, section 309, wetland banks, or else move to recommend the other one with a lot more of the titles, sections, and that sort of thing. You held a public hearing, you're not obliging any way to take any public comment, I will note that all we have on the line is city administrator Patrick Casey, he may have comment on this matter, but that's it for you. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Abby?
Within the conservancy zoning district, that's only where enhancement, preservation, or restoration could be possible with the first condition, correct?
And with the ordinance that would allow wetland banking, that would be the only place that wetland banking would be allowed, and it would be allowed by preservation, restoration, enhancement, but not creation.
Okay. I just want to try to make the exact distinction between the two, because they... Okay.
They're very similar ordinances in that they describe what wetland banking is, but one of them is just outright prohibiting it, banking anywhere within the community.
Abby, basically what we're being asked is to, do we want to allow wetlands to be created for financial gain? Is that correct?
Not necessarily created, do we want wetland restoration, conservation, preservation to have monetary gain within the community? The ordinance as written would never allow for new wetland creation as it sits today, as the ordinance is written today. Wetland banking allows, can be... Wetland banking allows, can be done by state law, by creation, preservation, enhancement, or restoration. What this ordinance is saying is, okay, you want a wetland bank, that's fine. We'll let you wetland bank in our conservation area, but we're never going to let you wetland bank by creating new wetland acres, by creating new wetlands. It's one way that we see that we could help limit the possibility of seeing our high, dry, developable land be converted to wetlands, but we still are concerned about just the additional preservation, enhancement, and restoration options for wetland banking. That help answer your question, Chair?
I think I have a clear... I'm just struggling with that, what it, to allow this wetland banking. I don't see what, from a city standpoint, what we gain from this, except more wetland. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but...
Yep, and I agree with you, and that is part of the reason that staff makes the recommendation. One of the benefits to the community is that there would be more, or there would be the possibility of additional wetland banking credits available for our developers. But there is a deficit for wetland credits in both of our bank service areas. So while those credits would be available to our developers, they're also available to any other developer within those bank service areas. So the city could run the risk, because we are a wetland wealthy community, that we end up becoming wetland banks for a lot of the other development that's happening outside of our community. We unfortunately can't restrict the credits to only be sold for development within our community. So there, the benefit would be to those individual landowners, but as a community as a whole, there are, I think, some other, there are questionably less public benefits than there are more public benefits.
Thank you. Other questions of...
So Abby, I think I totally have this, but so if I owned, I don't know, 100 acres of prime developable land, if I wanted to, if we had passed the second one here, I could sell that land for wetland banking, and they would never develop it, they'd turn it into wetlands?
We would not ever allow for banking by creation.
Okay.
So if your 100 acres was found after a wetland delineation to have 50 of it as wetland, those 50 acres of wetland could be restored or preserved or enhanced, and that could be, in the conservation district, could be banked. But if it was found during a wetland delineation, that all 100 acres were prime, you know, high and dry land, we would not let you create a new wetland in those areas.
And then the second part of my question is, or if I had a piece of parcel that had a lot of wetlands on it, I could potentially buy additional wetlands and have that all filled in so I could develop it?
Yes, you would still be able to buy other wetlands within the community, or you can, if you are a developer and your 100 acres, 50 of its wetland, you could, you would have to go through proper permitting and channels and get permission to fill it, but we would allow you to buy additional land elsewhere to create a wetland if that mitigation plan was approved by our local TEP panels, Bowser, the watershed districts.
Or the other option is, the first one, which is, they can only develop it in our current wetland standards. Is that right? The first clause where we recommend it's only in...
The first ordinance would just outright prohibit the act of wetland banking within the community.
Okay.
Two ordinances, one that completely prohibits banking.
For some reason, I thought we had wetland banking currently.
We do not, we have one, one, one residential property, a real residential property in the city that appears to have an active, active credits that did as part of that development bank. I don't know why, so it was developed in the township?
Yeah.
I've had mixed results of whether or not those credits are still available. I hear that credit, there are no credits available, and then I hear, well, there's some available in certain places. I think it has to do with quality of credit and quality of wetland. If you impact a really high wetland, you might have to have more credit, less credit. I'm not 100% knowledgeable on the credit program. That property would be allowed to remain. They already had those credits certified. It would just be the act of new wetland banks within the community.
Okay.
So Abby, straighten me out then. So a developer who is needing to fill two acres of wetland.
Sure.
And now somewhere else they need to do, I believe it's four acres, I believe you have to double...
It's, yeah, it can be double, it can be double, 2.5 up to...
If that developer goes and talks to somebody who's got some land and says, hey, I need four acres of wetland, and we'll create a wetland there, they can do that?
We would allow that because he's mitigating the development within the community. He wouldn't, for that very specific development, we would allow that.
Okay.
But we wouldn't allow, so let's just say, we're going to use easy math, right? He needs one acre of wetland. He goes to his neighbor, he says, hey, can I have those two acres? I'm going to build wetland. This planning commission says, you know, the code allows this, go forth and prosper. He can't come back and say, yeah, I created five, I'm going to bank three. You know what I mean? It would just be that you can satisfy your requirements for your development within the community.
And then we would just thank him for the extra wetland.
Yeah.
All right, other questions?
So is that the staff leaning towards the prohibiting of the wetland?
Staff would continue to recommend prohibiting wetland banking. As a reminder, all wetland areas end up becoming undevelopable areas, right? We don't develop our wetlands. We want to preserve them, we want to conserve them. Undevelopable land areas become tax-free property. I understand that there's a lot of different types of tax-free property in communities, but the simple act of monetizing this, we believe, could have some pretty negative implications in an already wet community, that we don't know how that will impact the developable land area, the development land patterns in those areas that are expected to grow between now and 2030, 2040.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
But could it not also be a benefit? We've had a couple plats come to us where they've had considerable wetlands, which caused a limitation on how many homesites they could put in, which almost made it cost prohibitive for them to develop the land, where if they could, with delineation properly, fill that in, get more housing units, and then have the wetlands somewhere else. So that could be a benefit as well.
Well, the act of banking could be a benefit to our development community. It's going to be, it's going to be a benefit to any developer within our bank service area. So it wouldn't necessarily be exclusive to Forest Lake.
So let's say we have a developer that's going to develop a piece, sorry, and wants to do this, but anybody else from outside of our community, anywhere in the state...
Can buy those credits.
Could buy those credits, and they would be not available, and he couldn't do it anyways then, or she.
Right. And as a reminder, with our development review process, our regulations, our watershed district regulations, we don't inherently support the filling of wetlands, right? As I think you heard in our last meeting, it was a really good analogy, that our wetlands are kidneys of the earth. We want to have these. The city has a very little say in the review process and the approval of wetland fill in general. And so it's, you know, we talk about these theoreticals, I have 100 acres, I got 50, I want to fill them. That is never going to happen. I mean, it's just not. And so we're really talking about small impacts, but yes, there is a cost to a developer who wants to impact a wetland. And that cost comes from typically creating new wetland. That's a very, a very rare circumstance, or buying, or maybe improving a wetland somewhere else, or buying credits someplace in that bank service area. And there's a shortage of credits in both of our bank service areas, and both of our bank service areas, well, I should say, the one that serves the east side of the city that heads towards the St. Corre River, there's no credits. So if there is a developer, and I'm going to pick on Scandia because they're right there. There's a developer in Scandia, and he's impacted a wetland, and he needs 100 credits, he's going to get those credits before our developer's going to get, you know, it's a first come, first served situation. On the west side of the city, in Rice Creek Watershed District, we've got a lot of the north metro that's building, and those bank service area credits, those are available to any developer. And so one of the concerns that the city staff has is our allowance of wetland banking just unilaterally, especially if it was by creation, could create these large banks that end up becoming the bank for the north metro and not for really benefiting our community. Take that land off the tax rolls, and now we've really are stuck with a lot of undevelopable, untaxable land, not to say that wetlands are developable again, but there's a variety of factors in here that are very much a cause for concern by city staff.
Other questions, comments? I am going to ask, this is not a public hearing tonight, we had that before, but sir, you in the back, are you interested in commenting on this?
No, sir, I came to observe here tonight, but...
Oh, that's fine. I just want...
Open to the process.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, yes. I'm John Waller. I live at 1401 Homestead Avenue, Hugo, Minnesota. I have a connection with Forest Lake. I've lived in the school district for, since I was five. So, but I'm also the Rice Creek Watershed District Manager from Washington County, and I'm not speaking here tonight for the board of managers, but only as an individual taxpayer. I came here to watch and listen to what your ordinance is out of my own curiosity, and I am supportive of local control, and I think your ordinances are well-written. I support the staff's, if I was to choose myself on the board tonight, I would support the staff's recommendation. The wetland banking has a lot of costs to it. They've come back to government. My experience has been that private individuals that create these banks, eventually, because of the maintenance requirements that you have under contract with the Corps of Engineers for a long, long, long time, they end up donating that or even letting it go back tax title to the, to the state, to county. So I think your staff is, and Ms. Abby's done just a terrific job tonight explaining it to you. I am fully supportive of their explanation, I heard. In fact, I'd invite her to come to the district and explain it, it was such a well, well presentation. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity. If you have any questions, I mean, I'll be glad to answer them.
No, I just, when we've already hosted a public hearing, we usually will allow further comment. We do ask you to write your name and address on the...
Ah, I will see.
So commissioners, any discussion? Hearing none, we have two, we need, we're being asked to choose one of two options here. And again, this will be a recommendation to the city council. We are not the final on this, so the chair then will be looking for a motion.
Yeah, I guess I don't see any benefit to the second one. So I would make the motion to recommend to the city council that they approve the draft ordinance enacting title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 153, Section 309, Wetland Banks.
I have a motion, or I have a second?
A second.
Do you need a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to item 6C. It's a continued preliminary plat, plan of unit development, zoning amendment, comprehensive plan amendment for Shadow Creek Estates, 6150, 202nd Street North. I believe, Abby, you're also presenting?
I am. Thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. Sorry, a second here. At your last meeting, you held a public hearing on Shadow Creek Estates. It was all the things that the chair just listed off, to allow for a multi-use development to be located at the northeast corner of County Road 50 or 202nd Street and Highway 61. I'm going to pull it up. Oh, we are already still, all right, there we go. So it's up there on the screen for you. As you heard in that last presentation, that the developer had been back before you several months, a couple different times, as early as late 2001. And initially, that first development included all of that northeast corner. Now what the developer has proposed is just to portion off the west parcel, we're going to look at that at a different time, but just look at the east side of this property. This is its own independent tax parcel, so that's something that can be done just sufficiently. The development plan proposes to create essentially, we'll just say, two neighborhoods. One neighborhood would be the existing Shadow Creek Farm Stables site. That site would be preserved in this go-around of the development, and then that other neighborhood site would allow for 46 town home units up in the northeast corner. They would be accessed exclusively off of Goodview Avenue, and they would not have any through street. You initially had seen in the past a through street to go through here. There were some challenges with that development plan, with the amount of impervious surface and the wetland impacts and crossing a stream. And so we've really looked at, kind of, how can we look at these as different development sites, keeping them in their own independent fashion? Since, so that is that, a layout of the 46 streets, I know it, or 46 units, I know it says 48 on your screen right now, but it is actually 46. At that last meeting, the planning commission did discuss this. There was comments regarding the street width. I think there were some comments, if I remember, regarding parking, and one of the biggest concerns from staff standpoint was density. Since the last meeting, the staff has met with the developer, we've talked about a number of those things. One of the big ones was the street width. The developer is proposing as part of the future final plat of expanding that street to meet our city standards. And again, even though it says private street, that that would be a public street in the future. With regard to density, additionally, the applicant, oops, sorry about that, the applicant has been exploring how to accommodate additional parking along the roadway, but that 32, 34-foot wide street would also accommodate for two-way parking, or two-way drive and parking as per our city code standards. As I noted, the, one of the biggest concerns, and I really hope I included this in here, here we go, was the density. As a reminder, the comprehensive plan guides this whole east half of the property for high-density residential. This commission, some of the members of this commission remember hearing reviews earlier this year, late last year, but the concern for high-density residential here from the neighborhood, also this body said, oh, but we also don't want single-family in this, you need to have some higher density. The density for this portion of the development really only gets to about seven units per acre, where they need to have a minimum of 15 units per acre. It's a really challenging site to get that high of density and not really frankly slap a big apartment building in here right behind these single-family residential neighborhoods. So what the developer is asking the city to do is to do, acknowledge a density transfer. So what that would do is look at this future site over here that would be required to have only 10 units per acre and transfer some of the density over here, which is averaging out right now about 23 units per acre, to transfer some of that density up over to this northeast corner so that both of these properties still remain in conformance. Some may ask, well, what would happen then with the stable site? The time the stable site develops, the stable site will need to meet the density requirements in effect at the time of the comp plan's future land use map adopted at that time. So if at that time it's, we say, oh, you know, we really don't want high density there, and we change the future land use map, then they would have to meet that 10 to 15 units at that time as well. If we say, no, we still want high density there, we'd have to, that site would end up needing to meet that density at that time, or they'd have to look at a comprehensive plan amendment at that time. Does that make sense so far? Everybody with me? There were no changes recommended by the commission to the park and trail plan. As I noted in our last meeting, the Hobby Farm would continue to be a legal, non-conforming property that's allowed to remain in perpetuity as long as it kept its existing operations. We would deal with the future development of... We would deal with the future development of that at the time the landowner was ready to develop that. Our comp plan does encourage the preservation of our agrarian lifestyle and these types of businesses, so it's supporting our comprehensive plan goals. Looking at the zoning code, it was asked in the last meeting about the specific zoning. After greater analysis and looking at the density, though the applicant doesn't indicate it, the rezoning request would be to rezone this property MX3. That would serve as a good transition from that single-family to that higher density that we're going to see along that western property line. It was brought up in the last meeting about the spot zoning of this property, which by law, spot zoning isn't allowed. However, because the property is going to have that higher, a little bit more of a greater density that we'd like to see in this neighborhood, what, what will end up happening is at the time that stable site is developed, it's likely that that stable site is going to develop as well with a higher density of it, or a little bit higher of a density of that same MXR3. We'd consider the rezoning at that time as well. You can always consider rezoning this farm-stable site at this time, but there would be questions of whether or not that's really the most consistent with the comp plan. Beyond that, there hasn't been any changes to the plans that you've seen here. We've just discussed these changes. So what staff's done is recommended, I think it's 12 conditions in the report. You make recommendation on all of these, the rezoning, preliminary plat, preliminary plan, and comp plan amendments. You make recommendation to the City Council on all of these matters. So what staff is recommending is that the City Council, that the Planning Commission recommends the City Council approve Shadow Creek's preliminary plat, preliminary PUD and zoning ordinance amendment, and then deny that comp plan amendment with the conditions outlined in the report tonight. I know the developer is here. If you have any, developer and landowners here, Todd Christensen, if you have any questions for him, do you have any for me?
Questions for Abby? Abby, in regards to, so we're only going to zone the townhouses? We're not going to do anything, rezone the stable?
That is correct.
All right. So that's not my biggest concern. So if we look at this plat, parking was, was raised to get additional, some kind of visitor parking? And this, this is like continuous driveway on this street. So how, how do you propose?
Sure.
Even with a 32-foot wide road, which by the way, I think we need condition 13 saying that, it's a public road.
Is, that wasn't in there? That might have been the condition. Yes, the, the road needs to be a public road and that, it should state that in the, in the resolution. The developer has agreed, though, that this will be a public road. You are correct, Chair, that we do have a lot of driveways through here. One of the areas that we've looked at potentially adding in is some sort of kind of pulled-in hammerhead. We all know that a lot of times those end up becoming snow storage areas, even though with an HOA, a lot of times they're trucking that, that snow out. The other thing that the developer has explored is how they'll be able to get some guest parking in kind of in a pull-off design in both of the locations on the east side of Private Road. What's labeled here is Proposed Private Street B, but it would be a public road. We, staff believes that we could accommodate quite a number of parking stalls in both of these locations, but we haven't done any analysis on that. The developer also knows that it's most likely that the unit mix is going to be reduced some because of the wetland impacts, which would reduce some of those additional gastro, ancillary parking needs. The site itself meets our minimum parking requirements. Now, we all know in these neighborhoods, minimum parking isn't always the parking we need because somebody has a party or a birthday or whatnot. But they have, the developer is exploring how additional parking can be accommodated on those streets.
And our parking, our parking requirement is two spots per...
I think it might even be four, but I'll double-check. I know that it's a minimum of two.
Two surface, I believe, is the...
Yeah, and they would end up having four.
Be on the driveway?
Two in the parking, two in the driveway, and then I believe it's two in the building as well.
I'd be it from me to say I can see two cars parked in all those garages, but my nickel opinion. Considering I have a three-car garage and there's no way you'd get three cars in there.
Is there even one in there?
Other questions of Abby? Hearing none. The applicant like to add anything?
Just a couple of comments, if I might.
Sir, once again, state your name and address for the record and...
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, City Staff, my name is Todd Christensen at 6150 Shadow Creek. Happen to live on the property. So as a taxpayer and a developer, it's a little bit different situation for me to speak in front of you tonight. But I will tell you that after extensive work with the staff and over the last eight months and changes to the property, we've tried to, as much as we can adhere to neighbors' concerns, staff's concerns, Planning Commission's concerns. I think we've, we've met those as best we can. I understand there's some issues with parking as always with sites like these and townhouse projects. A lot of them that we see across the metro are private drives, narrow streets, minimum We have expanded the driveways on the north to 33 feet, which is more than the usual 25 feet that you see in the single-family housing project, whether it's done by Lennar or somebody else. I mean, it's basically 25 feet. There is no parking, but obviously you have street parking as well. So I just want to call your attention to the fact that, you know, between these clusters of buildings, there is 47 and sometimes over 50 feet of parking on the street between, let's call it driveway clusters, if you will, for each building. So I think, you know, we'll continue to be, you know, conscious of that. There are wetland considerations that we're working with and probably we may even add another pond. But at this point, that's all engineering details that will be worked out through the final plat stage and final construction plans. I think the plan is good. I think it's a good mediation between high-density, you know, along the highway, single-family. And, and quite frankly, we don't have any, I, I don't have any knowledge of how the comprehensive plan came to be, but it seems asked backwards to me, excuse the language, but it should have been the other way. 15 to 20 units on the highway, 10 to 15 units as we move into single-family. So be that as it may, I think that we've come to a good resolution with the staff and, and they've been very good about working with me and, and my people. So we're happy with the plan we have and we hope you can recommend it for approval.
Thank you. Any comments, questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, Commissioners?
Chair, may I just note, we did look up that code section and our code does require each unit have four spaces, two in the building, two in the parking driveway. Two interior, two exterior. But then also, and I apologize for missing this before now, and even Todd, this will come in as a shock, and then a half of a space per unit. So they'll need to have 23, to conform to the code, need to have 23 parking...
Visitor.
Visitor parking spaces. I believe we've scaled it out and I think that we probably could get about 10. I don't know that the development as it sits right now would be able to get 23. So that might be something that the commission, with, in addition to condition number 13, that you'd maybe want to add, that the development shall maximize its visitor parking to become closer to compliance with the city code. I don't know the best way to, this commission might want to phrase that.
A very pensive-looking crap.
You have some more questions, sir?
I'm sorry?
You'd like to approach again?
I think that with the public right of way, hoping, Abby, that we can resolve some of that. And, you know, with the mitigation and wetland discussion we had earlier is, is actually one of my areas of expertise, and I wanted to speak to that earlier. But I'm happy that the staff recommended, or the commission recommended what they did. On that note, there is a lot of wetlands for us to work through here and I think that we can resolve it with the city staff to hopefully accommodate enough parking to make it work for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd, I have one question.
Yeah.
Are your thoughts with this project, going to have any type of age restrictions as part of your townhouse development, like a 55-plus neighborhood, or is it just going to be open to anyone?
We, we explored some of that. I think some of the other property might come to be that way in the apartment sides, but not, not with this project, no.
The only reason I ask is a lot of times you see in 55-plus neighborhoods, a lot less cars.
Yeah. I, I would agree with that. I have too many cars myself, but you know, what happens is what we're seeing now, you know, is, is a real movement with the millennials that, you know, they just don't want to take care of yards. You know the whole story. They don't want to take care of yards, they want to come home and, and leave. So it'll be interesting to see from my perspective on the demographics of that project, as I, I've got other projects around the metro and so, and I'm really curious to see what that demographic ends up to be because I, I could see it real mixed, which could make a lot of fun for a lot of people, I don't know. Or, or not. Thank you.
Commissioner, just a friendly reminder, or Chair, Commission members, just a friendly reminder, talk a little bit closer to your microphones.
I'm sorry?
Just talk a little closer to your microphones, that's...
You can't hear me?
I can. I just got an email that viewers at home cannot, so...
There's actually somebody watching.
As a reminder, City Administrator Patrick Casey is virtually joining us this evening.
Any discussion, Commissioners? Well, then I'm looking for a motion. And I would be happy to make one tonight. I would move to recommend that the City Council approve Shadow Creek Estates preliminary plat, preliminary plan unit development and zoning ordinance amendment and deny a comprehensive plan amendment with those conditions outlined in the May 22, 2023 staff report with the 12 requirements listed, a 13th requirement that the road is a public road to be 32 feet wide, and number 14, parking required to be close to compliance. I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
That's good.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
It's been a long road for you, good luck.
They always are. Look forward to working with the people in the future. Thank you, thank you, Abby.
So we will move on to our discussion.
Abby, what do you have for us?
I am woefully underprepared for that question. I don't have anything at the moment. The only thing that I would share with you is your decision on Northern Natural Gas was appealed by interested members of the neighborhood. So the City Council will be reconsidering that matter in June, though I, we've tentatively scheduled it for the 12th, I think it'll probably be June 25th at the City Council level. So just as a reminder, the City Council has granted you the authority to approve conditional use permits, but people can appeal your decisions. And then it's a do-over hearing at the City Council level. So they just essentially do the exact same thing you do, whole new hearing, same exact standards, that sort of thing. I'll stand for questions if the, any of the Commissioners have any questions for me.
No? All right. June meetings?
Oh, yeah. Ken could have told you. Ken's got updates for you.
At this point in the last month?
Yeah.
We have not taken in any new land use applications? So there's a pretty good chance we'll cancel one, if not both of the...
As of right now, I'll just tell you, your first meeting in June is canceled. Our second meeting in June, we might end up doing a little bit more workshop-y to talk about zoning code changes. But I, as of right now, I'm going to hold that meeting just in case something does end up coming in. We're still pretty close to where we could, far enough out from the meeting where if something ended up coming in early, we may end up being able to accommodate it. But right now, you can mark your calendars, June 14th is canceled.
All right. Thank you. And, and do we have a liaison?
We do not.
Okay. All right, before I move to the other way, going down the line, I have one announcement to make. It's for great sadness that Geneva is leaving the Planning Commission for personal reasons at the end of the meeting tonight. So on behalf of the Planning Commission, the city, thank you very much for your time. It's been wonderful having you on the commission.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move to the other. Geneva, we'll start with you.
Well, first of all, I want to say it's been an absolute privilege working with everybody here and through the changes. I learned a lot and I really care about this city. And I can clearly see that the people who are on this commission care about this city as much as, you know, the average citizen, but a little bit more because they're here. I like the discussions, I like the, it's not always a fun position to be in, to vote on certain things that affect people, especially if you understand their pain, but you kind of have to do what you have to do. And I, I look forward to having things in my life change a little bit so I can come back again and do something with the city, but it's been a privilege, so thank you.
Thank you. Justin?
Nothing for me.
Kevin?
Nothing for me.
Sorry.
Nothing for me.
Thank you.
Nothing for me.
Jeff?
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
And, and since we had Administrator Casey on, was he looking to speak to us this evening?
I'm not sure, Patrick, if you've got anything you want to share with the commission tonight, you want to unmute yourself? Otherwise, I'll take your silence as...
The hockey game has started.
Yeah, okay. I think we're good. I think he's been just kind of following the wetland banking ordinance and wanted to really hear the discussion the commission had because he'll be a part, you know, of ongoing conversations with us as well.
Okay. And I have nothing to add except once again, thank you, Geneva, for your time. And with that, the Chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'd make a motion to adjourn for the evening, sir.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, it's an unadbatable motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion's adjourned. Please have a pleasant and wonderful Memorial Weekend. See you sometime later.